Hadn't seen that, wanted to let you know about that plan that he has in 2021. And then moving on to the mayor's budget response letter. I had a really good conversation with Clerk Lopez this morning and his letter that I'm sure all of you have seen by now that he sent over outlining some of his concerns, but frankly, giving us also some options to consider as we move forward. And had a good conversation this morning as well with Council President Protem Torres. And really breaking down, you know, in our budget request letter to the mayor, we had included eight items and that was including restrooms. The mayor proposed funding for seven out of those eight. The only one that wasn't proposed to be funded was the rental registry, which is fine. It's not a huge cost. And once we get the ordinance passed, those dollars should be in the 2021 budget to fulfill the software needs for the rental registry and licensure program. And then for the proposals or the for the ass that we had sent over, we had voluntarily attached the fair elections fund as a funding source. And that was really in compromise with Councilman Flynn's idea around that. And that also garnered his vote on those four items. And with that, we were able to get those four items to a super majority. The mayor used his discretion and use the fair elections fund as a funding source for all of our budget requests. But in conversation with Council President Protem Torres, we were talking about the pros and cons and, and, and that's probably something that we're going to have to individually talk about offline a bit more with individuals. But also looking at this from the perspective that by utilizing the fair election funds either for all or even a subset of our ass, that is essentially one time funding for those particular ass. And so as we look at the star expansion, digital inclusion, the office on aging, would it be better served for us to come together and look at proposing a different funding source to ensure sustainability of those expansions and requests into the 2022, 2023 budget process, assuming that they wouldn't get cut out? And so it was just a different way of thinking about it. And so I'll go ahead and stop there. And we've got a little less than half an hour, but at least we've got some time to hear from folks and your thoughts about it. And so Councilwoman Kneech.
Thank you. I just want, had a question about the letter and the inclusion of the fair elections fund as a source. It was my understanding when we, when we initially decided on writing the letter, that we were not including our intended source funds, that the letter would be agnostic of source funds and it would just be the amendments. And I saw the end that the fair elections fund as a source got popped in there. And so I'm wondering what happened there? And when we decided to, to recommend source funds outside of the group dialogue about not including source funds?
So including source funds was, was always an intent. I, I know that there was some back and forth, but at least from, from
You went silent, I think, or frozen.
My perspective in the 2021 budget process. Are you, are you back? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can hear me now.
Are you back? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, and, and so I, we were always going to include the source funds in the letter because we wanted to be full participants in the 2021 budget process and to put forth what those were. And that final meeting, it was the, the Wednesday before the letter was due. Councilman Flynn, kind of late in the game, but you know, had suggested utilizing the fair elections fund. And that on the, the final scoring matrix were the items in his column that had an asterisk next to them, because those were the ones that he wouldn't have voted in favor of unless the fair elections fund was a potential source of those funds. And in years past, when, you know, we were, we were sitting pretty with the budget and everything was fine, we got really lax as council as far as, you know, saying where we were going to secure those funds from. But if we do a budget amendment for anything, we do need to identify where those funds might come from. So it pretty much, you know, got us a little bit further in the process.
I, I hear that part. We all identified source funds and explained them during the process for every single amendment. And I thought that was a helpful exercise in case we'd have to make a floor amendment. But in our meeting, um, leading up to the letter, it was stated that we weren't going to include the source funds in the letter, that we would hold off on the source funds. And so I, I hear the rationale. I didn't personally feel like it was appropriate to include that in there. And if it, and if we had included one source fund, I think we should have been more explicit about shifting resources that are appropriate. It's strange to gut fair elections and defund fair elections instead of defunding police for safety related initiatives. And I don't think we were, we made a clear or explicit comment about shifting appropriate funds for safety related issues in our letter and just wanted to put that out there. But thank you for your response.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. And that was, that was also one of the reasons we wanted to give council members at least a full day on the eighth of October to review the letter to get any feedback back to us as well. And so we're, we're trying to improve and refine this process as we're going. And so appreciate that feedback. Councilwoman Kneech.
Thanks. Um, I do appreciate, I did share some edits to the letter that were accepted and I appreciate that we did have that opportunity. So thank you to our leadership and to the staff for making that possible. This is a little bit of a mess, I just gotta say. I just want to share what happened with a couple of my requests. So on the COB, I thought our letter was clear in asking for additional dollars on top of what was already in the budget with the goal of getting to a very robust line item for a single high level FTE. The administration either misunderstood or disagreed and, you know, they, anyway, they, they came up with a total amount that was $70,000 in the $70,000 range rather than the $90,000 range. And remember, when we fund FTEs, we have to cover fringe and benefits, not just salary. So I frankly, and I also was very intentional about the source that I proposed for that COB funding. My staff has again done an analysis of the side by side and we still have an unexplained $366,000 increase in supplies and services in the safety budget. That has not been changed. And so I, I am considering bringing in amendments. So I'm checking frankly with the community to say, how do you feel about a position being funded $20,000 less than what we asked for? Can we get the right level candidates to, you know, at that salary level? And so, and then also, I just, you know, I didn't think this should, I didn't, we didn't put in our letter that this was an option for the fair elections fund. Yes, the mayor has the prerogative to counter and put in his draft as he sees fit. But I, I will, you know, be first getting feedback from the community. And then we'll frankly, you know, consider the options of pursuing an amendment to fund it at, you know, if we decide it's needed at the level to actually make sure we can cover fringe and benefits for a good salary for the right level person. And then potentially to use the same source that I proposed, which at this point has in two budget books, you know, no other department is seeing increases like this. And we're seeing an unexplained increase. The other thing I will say to Madam President's comment about the, about, you know, how the administration sees our request generally and, you know, it's my, I guess I will say this, I do think we should look at a full range of sources, not just those that have been proposed by the mayor. But no matter what source we use, they will consider our proposals one time, no matter what. I'll give you a great example. Last year, you all helped to support a funding request that was accepted to fund supportive services at tiny home villages. That funding was not put again into this year's budget. That program is competing for funds in the NOFA process. And that was funded with the general fund, which is frankly a renewable source of funding, right? So I think that my sense is having, you know, been in this role for a while, that any council request is considered a one time request and may not be funded in future years, regardless of the source, unless we somehow, you know, fight for it or check on it. You know, I've won some FTEs, for example, in housing, right around the time that the housing fund was being created, you know, that may have stayed on because new funding came on. But I do think that generally speaking, that is how they've described to me, they consider, even if the source is a renewable source. So I don't think that being not funded by the fair elections fund will make your request automatically part of the base budget going into next year, just, just to make sure everyone's on the same page that you might still need to monitor and refight. So a couple of other things I wanted to mention really quickly. I especially am confused and disappointed by the response on park restrooms, that the department of the size that department is, doesn't consider that to be a priority that just gets funded in the base budget and is made contingent. So to say that we will not have bathrooms unless we pay, unless it's funded out of the fair elections, I, I, that is astounding to me. And so, uh, anyway, I, that should not be a contingent request, people going to the bathroom in our overused parks during a pandemic. I, I'm just really flabbergasted. And then one, one really minor comment I wanted to make on a couple of other people's proposals, you know, in terms of the digital issues, I did vote for those, but I also am looking at our libraries being less and less likely to open and I'm questioning them as the repository of those dollars in terms of whether or not there are other ways to get laptops out other than through the library. I just am a little bit nerf. They have rolled back their opening plans so many times now that I just am skeptical that we're going to get them to, and, and I know they're doing the outside the library laptops while the weather's nice, but I guess I just wanted to ask the sponsors of that one to think about whether there's a different and better way to do that, because relying on the library does not seem to me to be a reliable method right now, given their inability to open. And potentially if this continues for a year, I just, it can't be our only way to provide laptop access or, or digital access if, if they can't open. So anyway, just a few random comments to throw out there, but, um, and I think we'll just have to keep talking a lot in between meetings because I think this is not probably, these are, these are complex conversations. Oh, last thing, sorry, one more thing, which is that to Councilman Flynn's proposal about the fair elections, I am not close to that as a source for some things, but I have been very clear with him and with the clerk and others who have called my office, that I believe it's critical that we fund the administrative dollars and that the fund not be zeroed out. So I'm, I'm not clear what the balance is today. If there is a special election, we do need to be able to fund that. And so, and I believe in putting the dollars back in the following year. So I'm open, if the council goes in the direction of looking for new sources, great. If the council goes for some of these requests for the fair elections fund, I'm also supportive as long as we put the dollars back and the admin is covered so that the systems can be built. Thanks, Madam President.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Kneech. And lots, lots there, appreciate all the feedback. The one thing that I, I did want to
Froze again, Madam President.
Reference in, oh, sorry, I'm going to go ahead and shut my video down. Can you, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
All right, great. All right. You know what I look like, so as long as you can hear me, we should be okay. Councilwoman Kneech, everything that, that you submitted and in the letter, we had 71,700 as the amount. The 91,000 that you referenced was never a number that was provided in any of our tracking documents, so.
Can I clarify?
Please.
The 71,000 was the request that I made. That was on top of a half FTE that was already in the budget. So the way that you get to the 90,000 is by adding the two together. So when we make our budget request, let's say STAR, for example, like we were very clear, we were asking for $3 million more for a total of four. So I was asking for 71,000 more. And so I did show all this math in the Google Doc. I showed that there was money in the budget already that we were adding to. I believe, I'll check back, but anyway, that, and again, miscommunications occur, but it's never been the case that when we put our asks into the mayor's office, that, that we ask for the dollars we need added, right? It's just weird that they would then subtract out other dollars. None of our other requests, we subtracted out dollars that were already in the budget. Every single one of our proposals are always additive, right? Here's the amount we're suggesting to add. So I, anyway.
We can go back and, and double check on that and, and we can certainly clarify with the, with the administration too. The, the intent was to create the, the FTE position and have it fully funded.
Yeah, and I think I have clarified with them and, and I think they, it sounds like there was some misunderstanding. I'm just, that it's, it's difficult to trace a misunderstanding like that when every other budget request we have is an additional dollar, right? You know, if you think about it, there's dollars in the budget right now for the Office of Aging. Those are additional dollars we proposed. There's, you know, money in the budget for the, you know, computers. These are additional dollars. So I just think it's weird they treated this one differently and said, oh, we're giving ourselves credit for money that's already in the budget. That's not how they've ever treated a council request. So I'm, I get that it wasn't intentional, but it's odd. That's all I'm, you know, and, and they may have a different opinion as well about the salary that might be appropriate for this. Again, I'm going to get feedback from the community if they think they can get the right person, but they did not have a discussion about salary with the office that they checked with. They just looked at the, um, the position, right? And as you know, our ranges in the CFA positions are huge, right? So if you think about what you could pay in aid, for example, what is it? It's a, it's a 20 or 30,000 dollar range. So funding at one end of that range gets you a different candidate than funding at the other end of that range. So I'm not casting aspersions.
No, no, just want to make
In no other area has the administration ever said we're going to give ourselves credit for this other money that's already there.
Right, okay, perfect, perfect. Just was looking back at, at some of the, the documents and we were working off of the, the numbers that, that we had presented. So, all right, great, thank you, Councilwoman. Quick time check, we've got about 12 minutes and we have four folks up in, in the queue, knowing that there's going to be quite a few offline conversations with folks as we look at next steps around the 2021 budget ask. Councilman Flynn.
Hey, Madam President, I just want to address what you asked earlier about the balance in the fund, the full $2 million transfer for the first year was made. And there were two disbursements from it for 62,000 personnel expenditures and 88,000 for a software system. So about $150,000 has been committed from the 2 million. And I also, in the attendees, I see that Dave Sabatos is there, who was one of the initiators of the original ordinance on this. And I reiterate, as long as he's here, what I said to him in a phone call, that I would not support doing a suspension of the fair elections fund transfer in any subsequent year, because my own analysis, as I shared with you, showed that we would not have needed the full $8 million if this had been in effect in 2019. We would have needed about 4 million. And acknowledging that there may be a different impact, I think it's reasonable, under the new program, I think it's reasonable to assume that there will be more demand on it the next year, but not the full 8 million. So while I am proposing it for this year, I would not support any further touching of the transfer in 2022 or 2023. And that would make a total of at least $6 million available for 2023. Clerk Lopez's suggestion that we look at committing to backfilling, as Councilwoman Kneech had said, I think is worth discussion and, and I sent you all an email this morning about that. So let's, let's engage in that discussion. But I think that, I think it's pretty well shown that the full 8 million dollars won't be needed in 2023. It would be overfunded. So that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Heinz.
Thank you, Madam President. So first of all, thank you for all you do. Not only do you have your constituents to, to deal with, you have us cats and trying to hurt us. So I just, as a, as a constructive feedback for the, for the process, adding the fair elections to gain one person for a super majority, it's not necessarily an additive process. You know, that, that, that doesn't suddenly, I mean, that changes the dynamic and doesn't necessarily mean that everyone else who was on board is still on board. So as I, as you and I emailed back and forth on, you know, that, I think it was the eighth, on the day that you gave us to review the, the letter. So it seems that the clerk has given us additional options. I, I'm not sure that I agree with Councilmember Flynn that there, that there's plenty of money in this banana stand or that we don't need $8 million. I, I think that the elections has done some analysis and they say 7.1 million, but frankly, the whole reason why we have this democracy for the people and fair elections is because we want to change behavior. And we just don't know how that behavior will, you know, will affect the way our system is set up. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is the library. A third of the people experiencing homelessness that the library reaches are not reached by any other city agency. And that's from the library's presentation. And so without the library's tech access, there would be people who, you know, certainly around the central library, who would then not have access to, to, you know, the internet for jobs or banking if they're banked or communication with family. So thank you, Madam President.
Froze up again, man.
Thank you, Councilman Heinz. Councilman Cashman.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, let me shut my video off.
A couple of things. First of all, I understand that all of our city agencies are in a budget crunch and that the parks money from 2A is meant to purchase parkland, but I'll be doggone if I, I have the stomach to approve pirating from the fair elections fund for, for a parks need when parks has another area of money under its own control that they can figure out a way to go to. It might, might be tricky, but these are difficult times. I also, I believe with all due respect to Councilman Flynn, I believe that fair elections fund needs to be fully funded the way voters requested by the time that money may be needed, rather than now at this point, trying to re-figure and say, well, maybe we can get away with five or whatnot. I think we need to ensure that it be fully funded and backfilled next year. I sent a note to the mayor on Saturday that I have not yet had a response, asking for his assurance that he'd be willing to go wherever we need to go, whether it's reserves, contingency, whatever, to ensure that that fund is fully stood up as intended. So I'm still, as Councilwoman Kneech said, very willing to look at it. These are odd times and I'm glad to have any source available on a temporary basis, but I, I need to be very clear that that fund needs to be fully funded so it's there for the election cycle approaches us. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Cashman. Councilwoman Sawyer.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and try and do this without my, with my camera on, but I may crack out too, because I'm sharing my bandwidth with Zoom schoolers. So if I crack out, start shaking at me and let me know so that I can turn off my camera. So I, I mean, I have to, I have to say, after we, after going back and looking at the budget, I mean, we are in a, we have a billion and a half dollar budget, right? And we are talking about raiding the fair election fund, something that 71% of voters supported. And frankly, I was not one of them. I, I have concerns about the fair election fund because of the Citizens United decision and, and its effect on, and efficacy based on Citizens United. And I still think that we have to be concerned about this because we are in an election cycle right now. The election cycle is four years long. It started on January 1st of 2020. And I think we need to seriously consider that, that there could potentially be, you know, special elections or something like that. And there would need to be funding in that election, in that fund. And we don't know, we don't know. And the 71% of the voters in the city and county of Denver have said that they want us to make sure that this is protected. And I think we need to, at least while it's starting, ensure the integrity of that and be careful with it. And, and then when we have more information about it, we could maybe be able to have these conversations, but we don't right now. It's brand new and I just, I'm incredibly uncomfortable with the idea of that. And given the fact that, you know, I wasn't one of its supporters, I, I just think that that should maybe carry some strength with it. And so I, I just think in a billion and a half dollar budget, they could shake some couch cushions and come up with, you know, the very little amount that we are asking for to fund some council priorities here. And, you know, in a way that would be, you know, maybe a little more respectful of that fund and, and of councils priorities, frankly. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to chime in on the digital inclusion piece. I think at least my line of thinking was related to the partnerships that libraries have and those being deep in a way that they could leverage those for getting computers to households or to nonprofits that need them for greater access. So it, it really is, in my eyes, leveraging one of the most trusted sources and institutions in my community to make some of that digital access more accessible. So that was my line of thinking with the library, but granted, it could be further explored even with children's affairs and possibly just making that available to some of the programming that they serve, whether it's Head Start families or something else that's kind of a natural connection point. But the, the biggest fact is they both serve, I think, a subset of the Denver's population that, that really does need that level of access improved. I, we're, I know we're coming up on time and I just, I, I'd like to have additional conversations about which other sources we'd be interested in identifying for some of the things that we don't think fair elections fund would be ideal for. If, if we can reduce the, the level of need, if we're drawing from that, it also reduces what we, what we back pay. I couldn't do this without some assurance, both of the number of colleagues it would take to, to, to make that decision, but also of the mayor, to my colleague's point, we also need him to assure that, that, that that's a move that would be made by the administration is to repay that fund. So definitely, I know we, we need to do this quickly, so definitely willing to get on the phone with some folks and kind of chat it through a little bit more.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilwoman Torres. And the administration both has, they, they have Clerk Lopez's letter as well with his response and then Councilman Cashman's request about making the fund whole as well. We've got, we're right at time, Councilwoman Saytabaka, last word.
Just a quick request that my colleagues pivot and recognize the optics of this situation. Our city has been asking us to defund the police and what we're doing Our city has been asking us to defund the police and what we're doing, if we approve this or even endorse it in any form or fashion, is essentially undercutting, we're not only not defunding the police, we're defunding the one thing that would, in theory, give them power, should they not like our decision-making not to defund. Incumbent privilege is a real thing and to think that incumbents also have the authority to cancel out resources for a public fund for elections is exactly why this passed in the first place. And so I just encourage my colleagues to recognize how small of a number this is in the grand scheme of things and decide if this is really the optics that we want to get behind for the general public at a time when, you know, it looks very self-serving to raid this fund. It looks very suspicious to essentially undercut opponents, future opponents. And so just that, appreciate having the opportunity to say that in our last minute. Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Sayte Baca. And I would encourage folks that, you know, reading through Councilman Lopez's response that, you know, even talking with him this morning, he had some, some really good points. I mean, when voters voted on this, we weren't in the middle of a global pandemic and, and knowing that they need these services and resources, but that to the counterpoint, there's also different sources that, that we could also look at. And so I would just encourage a lot of conversation amongst my colleagues around any amendments that might be made on the floor, so that we can make sure that those are shored up and that we make sure that we get those in the 2021 budget. And the only way we're going to do that, quite frankly, is us all working together and moving forward from this point and compromising and getting that done for the citizens. They've spoke very loudly and we want to make sure that we're doing that. And so thank you to my colleagues for joining us today. Our next ops meeting is November 18th and seeing no other hands raised, we will be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.